I am.
Darren, sometime we need to schedule an appointment to audit the financial records for the justice in the town. Yes, so I'm kind of putting it over to you, you're the busy, busy person.
Well, yeah, it brings out with COVID.
Is she doing all that?
Still feeling that.
What's she like?
Lake Street.
Is she sick or just?
No, she's sitting.
Oh, she is. Yeah, so it's just something we put out to you. I know we've got a lot going on. I'm heading to Denver a week from tomorrow, so. Family.
I know, I know, it sounds nice.
Well, it does, except this was happening. So I fly into Denver Tuesday, Wednesday, my daughter, granddaughter.
Hello.
I'll take one.
Oh.
Yes. I can't whatever else but myself.
May I ask why it doesn't say who it's from? I can make an assumption.
From Rachel. Because I just printed the last page because.
Okay. But you do see that, right, right. But you do see that it's not stated who it's from. So, okay.
Well, that's right. I mean, it's not saying Rachel, but it's. Rachel.
It's the last, this is response to the letter. It's.
Yeah, that's okay.
My printer takes.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Call us meeting order.
Karen.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan. Yes, Scott.
Yes. Okay, so. Move on to DA and DB.
You want to do A first?
We first.
Yeah. Yeah, he's got A stuff.
His stuff.
Well. Since we're going through.
Start there and.
Operation of buildings first. Talk about.
Or do.
The trees and the security system. Like. Did you get your?
Yeah.
Well, I sent the email to you, although they sent it to you. And I sent it to you again.
Want to do?
A sixteen twenty point.
Why don't we do twelve twenty point one first? Was that supervisor? I'm sorry.
Are we going to do this in numerical order? So if we started with a sixteen twenty point four one, that would be the first line item in the eighth. I think that's what you were suggesting we said. Yeah.
That's just.
Okay.
So what are we thinking there?
Well, we got a, we got a quote from Bonney Multiplex. We already have. They would have to replace the wires here for the town hall. And the cameras, because they're different cameras nowadays. The screens would all stay the same. We could use those. They could just hook into it. According to our judges, though, any video that's in the courtroom is not owned by the county attorney. It's owned by the justice system. There's some law.
That separate.
Well. How he suggested it was. You can't ask for the video and get copies of the video of a court proceeding.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah.
I can't as town clerk. But as court clerk, I can.
Okay.
So it's not a big deal.
It's just a matter of permission and it's not a matter of.
Right, and then if law enforcement.
Multiplex.
Yeah.
They stored all they had to come. Things with the highway drivers.
Well, there was a, I got a call from the sheriff's office the other day. And I had Scott come down and grab the security camera or the video. Apparently, there was a larceny in her haven, which turns out to be a lot bigger than just larceny. But when we viewed the videotape. Truck went by, a big truck. You heard about this?
I did.
And you see a guy with a flashlight going on in the yard in here. And we're looking at it and it, it was, we believe it was EMV making the delivery.
Oh.
Because everything says twelve ninety state route one oh four A and he was just checking to see, but it was kind of weird. But we couldn't. There were no cars that went by here. They were trying to see which way the.
Whoever left, yeah, they came this.
For the larceny, so they either went down thirty eight or went the other way. But it was. It, you know, it, it's better to have only multiplex do this than us. Not that I know of.
What on? So what was the, I apologize, I didn't read the quote.
Oh, okay. Well, there's. Lee had, she asked them for cameras and I'm not sure where you wanted the cameras.
There's one way beyond the town hall. Hook up the recorder.
Right.
Because we don't, they'll have Wi-Fi out there. And they were going to have street cams out there. They're going to be just recording. So there'll be no.
So it'll be three cameras?
Three cameras out there.
Okay.
And one, and one at the end of town. There'd be four cameras total for Sterling's stores. One beyond the town hall will run through town hall system. And the other three will be on the schoolhouse two open and one on the caboose. So when you say out there, this general area, so they'll look out back. That camera that's beyond the building. So look out towards the wall and go in the tower.
Well. The historical building is thirty seven hundred, which they have money in their account this year. They could easily pay for that. And then the town hall is probably about seven thousand. But that's for the rewire and everything.
So that's not going to be yearly fee. That'll be.
No, it, there'll be a yearly fee probably to monitor. I don't know what they charge you for the annual fee here. It's like two hundred and thirty dollars.
I don't.
Year.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's minimal.
Right, it's small. I don't have the number. I have an initial cost to be just for the installations.
Correct.
And that's the same with the town hall or with the historical society, be thirty seven hundred.
Thirty seven hundred for them and then. Six thousand three hundred and fifty plus eight hundred for the town hall, which there's money there this year. I say.
So we want to.
We could do it at the next meeting or.
So you're going to be enough money in the budget, what's left to come out?
Well.
That wouldn't be contractual, will it?
Yeah.
Because it's.
Well.
A one-time payment.
It would be equipment.
Because we're. Even if it's for them setting it up, okay.
So should we?
Transfer. You just modify the budget and move it.
Okay.
Just sort of come out of one account.
Should we do that at the next meeting transfer?
Just do a budget module, transfer from the point.
Point four four and point four one to the two account.
Oh, I thought the point four one was trees and point four.
Four one is the museum, that property over there.
Yeah, but I thought that was for, I was thinking fifteen thousand, we were talking for trees and taking trees down.
Well, I think somebody got a quote. Dan, did you get a quote for that? Okay.
Yeah, I thought that that's what the fifty thousand was for then, point four one, the trees, but it's not for.
Yeah, so make sure this will leave the, the quote that we got from All American was. Sixty nine eighty six, which were remove all trees with the exception of the stumps, as long as they have access from the neighbor's yard.
They've already said it, they've already driven.
That was their caveat though.
Right.
And then it was.
Or possibly the stones out of there.
I don't, I don't.
Well, if we can get.
Get us a little.
If we can get in there to do it.
They'll let you.
That would be the trick, but yeah, that.
That's half price, less than half.
Boy, yeah, it's less than that. The other was fourteen.
Fifteen, I thought he said, yeah.
Did that include the stop removal?
Just move removal of the.
Five trees.
It's not. Clean it up the wood.
Is that doing that this year?
That's, 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 that's cleaning up the wood. But not the stones.
Right. Would they do that this year?
They could. I mean, we need to validate a few things or confirm a few things like property line and such. And we probably should get something in writing with the landowner, the neighbor, so that. You know, it's documented that he gave us permission, so if something were to happen, you know.
Well, if they've got. Probably about. Thirteen thousand in their account now for the museum. They could easily do this in the trees and then done.
Out of this year's budget.
Yeah.
So why don't we just plan that?
We have to get them out of it. We don't know what's going to happen.
Get them out now because if we wait till spring and one of them comes over in the middle of winter, in the middle of the storm.
You'd have to wait to get in there too.
Yeah.
So I'll put that.
Plus they're, they just had stuff done, so. You know, it's not like.
I'm sorry. A sixteen twenty point four one.
Oh, that's what I, that's what I said. I said point four one was for the, the.
So they still got a little thirteen thousand dollars in there.
Is take the four one for the security system, put it in point two. Yeah, see that, the trees would be contractual, yes, but the security system would go under equipment.
Right, that's what, that's why I was getting confused because the trees were point four one.
Yeah, it sounds like this is twenty twenty two, so we're dealing now.
And I get that, but I just said that, yeah, you can take it out of point two, just take it from the point four and I thought.
Right.
No, we can transfer that.
Yeah, yeah, I just, just.
So that's, and the same with the cameras here, we can do that this year.
Okay, so I'll put that on for next meeting.
Alright, so we always do, you want to leave it for fifteen thousand next year, you think, for?
Does the museum?
The sixteen twenty point four one or? What are you thinking?
We don't, we got the, you know, the.
Pretty much everything's done? Do like twenty five hundred or something for incidentals or?
Yeah, we got, well, we got it's heat and lights.
Lights.
Yeah, that's.
Is that pretty much what the seventeen thirty is, so?
Yeah. No, that, that includes, they did.
There was a glass.
Didn't they do something?
The windows or something.
Something with the glass over there this year.
Probably replace the, yeah.
Yeah.
So if we did twenty five hundred, that'd give you plenty for the lights and the, yeah.
Yeah, your lighting bill's under thirty bucks a month.
Well, it's changed. Lights not for a couple of days.
Okay.
Change sixteen twenty point four one to twenty five hundred. Everything else, were there any other questions we had?
Nope, then we go to A, next page is thirteen, A thirty three ten point four.
Which you left it the same.
Right, I'm thinking I'd like to jump it to thirty five hundred dollars. And three thousand.
What's that cover exactly?
All your signs.
Signs, I've been buying more and more of them, so.
Plus they're going out the price.
Sixty six dollars. From forty five dollars.
Fifty ten point one.
That's up to the board.
They can point the three percent like everybody else or?
Sure, whatever.
Give me a year.
You would like.
Can, I don't have my calculator with me.
Fifty five three seventeen.
Okay.
That sound right? W, the same thing.
What, what security takes map?
Fifty five thousand three hundred and seventeen.
Okay. You do.
Deputy would be twenty two sixty six. That's what three percent is.
What was it again, instead for deputy?
Deputy's twenty two sixty six. Personnel services, fifty one thirty two point one. That's what you pay them out of for mowing.
Up and out.
All that.
Right.
Do we?
He gave me that figure.
Right. You happy with that then?
I am.
Yeah, but if they get three percent more, is that going to cover that?
Do you take that out of each account or do you put that, you almost got to do.
So to, and to your point, that's right, these, all the labor numbers are based on twenty two sixty five.
They're based on the same.
Right, there's no increase.
So if we did.
If you added three.
And I talked to Kurt and he said that's what they were, we don't have a contract or anything yet, but. That, you know, if they did get the three percent raise, it almost, almost have to raise everything three percent or else justify it all on one of the other funds, so. Estimative be four thousand. One twenty maybe?
Four thousand one twenty.
That three percent.
Three times four.
Yep.
Now with the truck come out of the point two account.
That's going to have the. That's coming out of chips, right, Dan?
What's that now?
The truck.
The truck is the.
Pickup.
The plow truck.
Pickup.
The pickup truck, that's really up to the board if they want to move forward with a pickup truck at a later date.
I think we are.
I don't get it very well.
I will tell you, talking to Rob about pickup trucks, you're looking at.
You're not going to get one this year, it was probably.
Yeah, but you, you have to order it now in order to get it.
Like, you're going to be probably ten of the year.
And aren't some getting used?
That is correct.
Yeah. State bid, can it be done on state? Do you do the, I say state bid?
Right, so right now, as I understand it, the dealers are not taking orders.
Period.
Period. For. Public works type trucks. I've hit three.
Because they're, they're, they're going to fill all their orders for. Residential customers where they can sell them a seventy.
Yeah, if they have a handful of chips, they're going to put those chips in.
Where they can sell seventy thousand dollar truck out of fifty thousand dollar truck.
That's correct. So what I understood that Mexico did was, and this was hearsay, but they went online and purchased, it was Ford Lincoln out of Florida used. So. That's what towns are starting to resort to.
I'm thinking with a, with a ten wheeler plow truck and a mower. I'm thinking if we can hold off on the pickup till next year anyways.
I say we've got the fun balance.
Run us another year.
Or right now, I mean, we, that was the whole goal, was to get this through one more year. But. We just, I don't know, we put four or five thousand dollars into it, it's back over to followers right now having an electrical switch put in so that the headlights work. So. It's a safety truck.
Yeah, we're just saying, you're the best option. We may end up waiting here this now.
No, I understand.
And I'm in favor of looking at it now because it sounds like we can't order one right now and get it in a month or two.
Right, that's what I mean.
So if we were to order it, submit this year, if that were possible, could we encumber?
Would you not have had a budget now? Bring it in?
If you could buy it out of.
Right, let's say.
And are you going to pay for it in this, in this year?
But we probably wouldn't, hey, probably we wouldn't, I'm thinking in the year, going over into next year. Let's say that because, I mean, it's not likely we're going to get it in the next few months is what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah. You would have to buy a used vehicle.
Do we have to, do we have to budget for it now or if we decide to buy it in the year? Modify the one.
You can do that or you can just budget it now for two thousand twenty three. Don't you think that's when you're going to be spending the money anyways?
Yes.
See, that's my argument.
That's, that's what I would do is budget.
Do it now, because when you're saying in future, the future is twenty twenty three. So now is the time to look at it. Otherwise, we're talking twenty twenty four potentially.
Right.
It's probably a good chance it's going to be twenty twenty four anyways. I don't think you're going to order one if you ordered it tomorrow. These guys have ordered them last year before small season and everything.
I think if you put it in twenty three budget.
I think it doesn't have to go back and upon balance.
What do you, what's?
So you're going to raise taxes to get it.
Nickel down, nickel down. You know, if you were able.
Dexter now.
If you were able to buy it through a public's work, public works.
I should be around sixty probably.
Oh, actually, I'm thinking probably forty.
Think so?
But I don't think you can do it.
Do I have a budget fifty?
I think fifty is a fair number for maybe something used. Right?
Or if we get, if we find a new one at sixty five, then you move some funds.
That's worse.
Why don't you just get ready once? I mean, we have the money, like she said, the front balances. I mean, are we?
A lot of budget, I mean, this, I mean, if you're thinking forty, I'm saying fifty. Do you think we should go seventy or sixty five?
Have new three quarter done then here?
I, I priced one out from four. This is crew cab. X L T. It's what he's got now, it's what he's getting next time, whatever state bid is. That's all anybody has, isn't it?
No, they do, yeah.
My son and daughter just ordered a crew cab shaddy and they were at around sixty.
Yeah.
With a, you know, and that's with some bells and whistles on it. So I think if you budget it sixty or sixty five.
Forty.
If you, if you talk to Will Fowler, I wouldn't buy General Motors.
No.
Because they're having issues with their lifters and it's not.
I'm not saying.
Whatever this, I think.
Whatever you can find is, you know, is.
Sixty thousand.
Sure.
Yeah.
Under what account, please? A.
Fifty ten point, point two.
Fifty ten, forty two.
Did you say sixty?
Sixty, is that, sound good, Dan?
It does.
We're safe?
It does.
So did we decide on sixty?
Sixty.
Okay.
Fifty ten point two. Transportation.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so we've got. Under superintendent highways, A fifty ten point one is fifty five three seventeen. Deputy is twenty two sixty six. Equipment is sixty thousand. Okay, and then. The garage personal services is forty one, forty one twenty. Okay. Is everything okay for the rest of that part two?
Yes.
Equipment's good.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, then. So we should be good there, right?
Training. We handle that in house. No, we, we. Keep it in house. Or within. The Highway Association.
Okay, so page six is, we had a question about cemeteries.
Well, we did that last night.
We did, but we had a question. We adjusted Martville because Joan got a email from Carolyn Waterman, so that's back down to a thousand. But we just. Instead of fifteen hundred, correct. And.
Why did they want less?
They said keep it the same.
Okay.
Yeah, but just kind of questioning the town managed.
Right, if Dan thinks we can do that.
Yes, but. How often do you think they need to be up in the cemeteries? Twice a year?
At least twice a year.
Okay. Is it like one full day or is it?
Now you're talking to town man or?
The town man.
Well, we're looking at maybe hiring somebody, Steve Earl to do this. I, Dan and I talked about this today.
Okay.
And so if we could hire him, he does the cemetery owner for four fifty. And that's a lot bigger cemetery, but.
Oh, yeah.
He's doing a lot of that on with a mower, but he does a lot of cleanup too inward.
That's we don't want him doing them every week like he does this.
No.
We do them two or three times a week or whenever he does it.
He don't do, he doesn't do it that much, no?
No, I didn't. I get complaints from residents because of the.
Well, he didn't do that until the day of this, or the, the day before, or two days before the ceremony, right? And it looked like crap and, but he did an excellent job cleaning it up.
Yeah, it's not a reflection on Steve when we talked about cemeteries. That's why I talked to Linda Smith. And were you a part of that conversation? Okay, so you recognize that they really are on a shoestring budget. So we upped theirs to three thousand and Carolyn got back to me, Carolyn Waterman, who was involved with the Martville Cemetery, who said. Who's involved with the Martville Cemetery, who said a thousand's fine, because they're, they still have burials, so they have some ravens or burials. So I guess it's a matter of.
Okay, so then.
So the question is, is the ones that we own, is, we had a thousand or fifteen hundred for them, right?
We can't do it, if, if we're gonna hire it out, that's fine, but it can't be under personal services.
I just changed to point one because remember, because everybody said town managed, I just need to know, if it's not town managed, I don't want it to be point one, I want it to go back to the contractual point.
Correct.
Well, we won't know till, if he gets back to me by now. But I think if the town guys are gonna do, it's gonna cost more than that, because it's all gotta be done with a we digger.
But it doesn't sound like Dan wants it.
No, I don't think he does, I don't think they have time to do that.
Can you speak for yourself?
Sure.
So, so we can put it to a.
And Dan's gonna address his thought.
How about if we take the five hundred, make it two thousand, just to be safe?
I would like to hear Dan's input about.
So we do help out when we can, but it isn't as often as it probably should be, so. What I've seen is, is if there are things that we can do with someone like Steve. Where it's more scheduled and it's more amenable to the town's needs. I mean, the town, the highway department's here to help, you know, if we can go down there and, and do it with a brush hog, but. When, when you get involved with some of these things, like down on the Irwin Cemetery. Where you're into, you know, you, you can't get in there without doing it all by manual labor.
Right.
There's nothing wrong with that, it just takes a lot of time.
Correct.
So it's hard to break it out, I mean, we went in there this spring, two men, and worked on it, but again, it's probably better if Steve can handle it. Especially if he's doing the town cemetery here for four fifty. Like we said, these cemeteries are much smaller.
He did them each for.
The only problem is, is that, you know, you, it's all manual, it's all.
All manual, there's no drive to liability.
Yeah, that's a liability.
Steve, he's gotta be self insured, he's gotta be insured, not self insured, he's gotta have insurance and stuff.
Yeah, he's gotta have credit.
He's working, he's gotta have workers happy and stuff.
Something that needs to be discussed.
Make sure he gives us a big financial card, right?
No, you wouldn't wanna do it, you, you'd have to do it right.
Does that?
The only thing you'd have to ask for is a certificate, he could give you.
Certificate of insurance.
If he doesn't have it, then no, you don't wanna do that.
Do we have to pay prevailing wage on that?
I'm listening to that.
But it's town managed.
Right, so if we have to pay prevailing wage, then we're.
You think that falls under that?
There's, there's no, like, with Sterling and Martville, there's a cemetery association, so we're making, we're paying them, we're taking care of it, if there's, if it's our own. Thing.
Is that a question that A O T, and?
No, you gotta pay for it, it's, it's town owned, town owned. So are you saying?
So if we use our own guys, we're gonna have to pay the prevailing wage.
Correct.
We have enough part-time guys, don't we, that, can you call part-time guys to come in?
That's what we do another time.
I think if, if, if he, the only reason you have to pay prevailing wage is if you're hiring somebody. Hiring persons to work there.
Right.
If you're doing it, the person owns the company, I don't think you have to pay prevailing wage, maybe you don't.
Then, when he came out and gave that talk, I think, Carol.
Carol Haggie?
Carol Haggie. You have to, now, because it's a, because she's self-done, she can, she's doing on a contract where she says, I do it each time for this much. But she has to, you know, say, well, I'm paying my self prevailing wage an hour or whatever. She's not paying anybody else, so she doesn't have to prove that, which I don't know, Steve has somebody that works with him, or he does it himself. So if he's, he would have to give us a contract, I think, that says that each time I do it, it's this much money, and we would have to give him the prevailing wage, the same as we do with Carol.
We don't need to do this tonight.
No, we need to make sure we have enough money.
Right, we need to know what your count it is, because if it's point one, then it's personal services, that's him.
Changed it.
Point four, four, right, let's, I.
We can't get, we can't get part-time guys to come in and.
We could probably get one. I don't know, you know, it's hitting this. Right now, we have Dave Scott coming in to keep up with mowing around here, and it's working out well, I have him on the schedule. Until he has another job that comes up at the Port Authority where he can't make it, so, and then you have Josh.
She's not gonna wanna come here and do it for you, and he can go do it for himself for places.
It's, it's getting hard.
Okay, so if we hire Steve.
Let's put it under the point one figure.
No, point one would be our own people, and you have to keep in mind, if you're, if we are using our own people, it's not just their hourly, hourly wage, because then you're paying.
Now you gotta pay.
And then you're paying traffic insurance on them, and you know, stuff like that, so you're getting into.
So it'll be better to do it contract.
But if you did, you, Steve, I would want a certificate showing that he does.
Right, but what account would you like it under?
Point four.
Four, four?
If that's what.
Okay, yeah, that's.
I just changed it to point one, but I'll go back to point four.
Do we wanna put two thousand in there instead of the fifteen hundred? Because we've got five hundred that we're not giving Martville now? Just to be safe, because we don't know what he's.
Town managed would be point four, four.
That's what I'm gonna call it then, because that's how I started it.
Yeah, because I don't know what else to call it.
I know, that's why I'm asking you to make sure the.
Still keep it called town managed.
Okay. Just remember this.
I know, and it's changed to two thousand.
Two thousand.
Yeah. But I'll give you the list.
Okay, you're gonna, yeah, cool, thanks.
And I'm thinking if we charge just two hundred for each one. On the high side.
Yeah, the worst.
There's a dozen, three times, so it's six hundred times, three times, doing all three of them would be eighteen hundred.
The worst one.
I'm just guessing.
Oh, yeah, the other.
The other ones are.
If you could, um, what's the name of that one up there?
Australian Station.
Ladoo?
Ladoo, no.
It's a Ladoo Cemetery. It's on Australian Station.
That, that way people get in there, otherwise that's very, pretty clean in there, except for.
Yeah, it's back in the trees and up there.
Right, that's right.
And down to Irwin, if you mow up, maybe a path up through there, so people can.
Get up.
Bobby Woodard does mow that, he just mowed it, but.
Yeah.
It doesn't get mowed till later on this year, so if there was a path mowed up there. That was some of the complaints years ago that people couldn't get in, and it was terrible.
Remember that? So is everything here, Dan?
So, where do you wanna start?
Bridges?
Bridges.
Okay, so that's all good. I did get a price to replace Onionville Bridge, but, you know, that's, we're gonna have to talk about that. You know, that's a, for materials only, it's, it's like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, so, that doesn't include installation.
Probably twice that.
Right.
He's talking about the bridge, but he's good with what it is.
Keep building up our bridge reserve.
Right, which is currently twenty.
And hope we can find grant funding.
Right now, I've got two hundred, five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for bridge reserve.
So this is, the ten thousand's fine, it's a good start, we can do soil borings, get that done, start moving down the path toward potential. Alright. So.
And, okay, may I ask something before we move on? Just to clarify, because at the last meeting, I talked about budgeting in a reserve, so I would say, oh, for the bridge reserve, let's put fifty thousand dollars in. But Pat, you had a concern with that, because you said that that mechanism was used with Randy Lawrence, and it was from a.
No, there's a, there's another reserve account number that was used with Randy Lawrence, which is what Williams Law Book suggested, and it doesn't flow nicely on your, it confuses people on the budget.
Okay.
Summary sheet, so we, at other accounts, if we wanna put money away, we all budget in that our account. Or if we wanna spend from the reserve, we'll budget it, but we know that at the budget manual we're talking about, that we're gonna use that, because the other one, it just, it's too confused.
Right, so is that something we wanna consider in light of what Dan's mentioned about? Well, I just told you what we have in the reserve, just a little over two hundred thousand. So do we wanna budget some money and for the bridge reserve?
What are the grants, Dan, over ten percent?
Correct.
I thought there was a bridge grant.
Well, we've reached, we've reached out to.
Oh, we get it.
We don't know that, we're trying, we actually have two applications out. So, so it's a, we, we did one with John Catco, and then we did another one, but the, I'm not sure about the status of the one we did last year. Supposedly, they are going to reevaluate it again this year. But it was caught up in the budgeting process with New York State, I don't know what the outcome of that was, I haven't heard, where they stand. But I would definitely think about putting more money into the bridge reserve. If we can.
Right, how much are you thinking?
Yeah, well, that's just if we're gonna spend out of reserve or, or increase our reserve, and we, we haven't been doing that through the budget, so.
We do it at the end of the year with the.
We don't always do that, you just.
If there's enough.
We try to, but Joan wants to, since we kinda lost sight of that, then she wants to see.
I think we're losing that, if it's not in the budget, it's kind of been an understanding, well, at the end of the year, we'll put it in, but that doesn't always happen, so there's a problem with that, because we're not building up the reserves. Right, so here's an opportunity to budget, and Pat said from a bookkeeping standpoint, this will work by putting it on the point two R.
Right, that.
Right.
Right.
So that would get budgeted in to go to the.
If we can, I'd put fifty thousand dollars in.
Okay. That said, DA's a little if-er, it was a fund down.
Right, if you can.
What's the fifty-two thousand in the equipment?
I just left it, because I don't think you, do you need fifty-two thousand in that equipment?
So the answer would be, I do now.
Okay. I just wouldn't, you didn't have things filled out, I had to put, I just kind of.
Right, no, so.
We had fifty-two in there for last year.
So, right, so I didn't know if the fifty-two thousand was actually flowing into the reserve fund.
No, it's just sand it.
Right, so that's why I left it alone, because I didn't know how that money was flowing.
Okay, so you don't need it.
In one of my notes, I had it on my sheet, that it was money set aside, like what we just did up here in a bridge, to go into the reserve.
So you wanna deflect the in the bridge reserve?
Well, if, if, if there's, if we have money, so this is all sudden done.
Right.
So the, so the other thing that we have in point two R is that our contribution toward the purchase. Of the new cloud truck that's scheduled for twenty-three would be one forty-five, eight twenty-five, and eighty cents.
Where's that?
Okay, say that again, I, go again.
So in point, in point two R.
Yeah.
Point two R, DA fifty-one thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Equipment from reserve.
Yeah.
From the reserve.
We're taking the one, what'd you say it was?
One hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, so that kind of defeats. Right, putting fifty thousand in there, but pulling one forty-five out, so.
Well, this isn't the equipment reserve.
Yeah, this is the, this isn't the bridge.
Fifty-one thirty, not fifty-one twenty.
So as I recall, there's two, two equipment reserves.
I know, I know.
I know, but I'm confused too.
On fifty-one thirty point two R, Joan wants to put money away every year, so we were gonna budget fifty thousand, you just said we're buying a plow, and we're using fifty-one thirty point two R.
I thought Joan was talking about putting fifty thousand in the bridge reserve.
Oh.
We were talking about.
Yeah, 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 okay, so it's DA fifty-one twenty point two R, right.
It's fifty thousand, right. And then DA fifty-one thirty point two R.
He wants to spend.
He wants to spend.
So does that go here? And that's a bookkeeping thing, I would defer to you, how do you?
Because the one's called bridge reserve, that there's equipment from reserve, so that's like, you're taking it out, not putting it in.
We use it for both, if we're spending it out of the reserve, there is an account number, but when we put it on the budget. And you go to the summary sheet, it was throwing everybody out, because we knew what it meant, county, but the public and, and even Randy was like, I don't like this, so.
Right.
That's why I'm saying, if you're gonna spend money out of the reserve to buy a truck. We can budget there, personally, I wouldn't, because that's not gonna show, it's, it's not gonna show you on your budget summary that is coming out of reserve, it's gonna look like it's coming out of bond balance. Right, so I, I wouldn't put it there, I just know in our own mind, if that's what our game plan is.
Okay.
And that's, so we don't have to actually budget it for.
No, I mean, to put something away, I thought that would be a good way, just, we'd see it, we knew what that meant, but if you're spending it out of reserve.
So would that, Pat, require still the public referendum?
If you're spending money out of your, you gotta, you gotta put in the paper that you're spending money out of your reserves.
Assuming it's, and that goes back to my question, is it a, I, I need to double check my language. Type or specific, oh, remember the types of reserves.
There are.
I got a list, but right.
Yeah, but I.
I think these are the generics.
Which ending, you still have to put it.
Yes.
Out there in the paper for the public to say, I am spending money out of reserve, either way, that's my understanding.
Not a budget line item or not, it's.
Well, it's whether it's type or, I wish I could remember the two phrases and make sure, but anyway.
You're right, you're right.
If it's set up one way, you have a subject to, the permissive referendum, when you're setting it up, that's when it's specific, you want to buy that out, or put that outhouse out back.
Right.
If you just say, I wanna get a building fund, then you don't, so it's not subject to permissive referendum when you set it up, but when you go to spend the money out of the reserve, it's subject to. I'm assuming these are the generic.
I'd have to look, I have to look.
Right, and that's what I'm asking the town board, I can set them up, yeah.
Okay, before we go into bridges, I just have a quick question that Charlie brought up, that I thought was a good point. In between the two C and two R, there's three hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, how, what is that for?
Believe that was Mackinac Tower Bridge.
But why is it like underneath the, it's not on a line item?
Oh, I see, white, so.
What's the two C? So it's DA fifty-one twenty.
That's how we established the Mackinac Tower project, I just.
Okay, put a C to make it, man, that's what it is. So is that our five percent contribution?
I don't know, I, I have to circle lines and why that's flowing there, it's because it's odd that it's not, you know, take a look down how it's, I don't know why. It's odd that it's not, you know, take a look down how it's, I don't know why. I have to ask them.
Okay.
The only thing I can think of is, if you look at the, at the, up at the top, adopted budget slash modified budget, we must modify the budget, which I believe we did, to accommodate the spending and the receiving and things like that. So we modified the budget, see how that?
Right.
Okay, so that's what the three sixty four, modified it. So we're whole on the Mackinac Tower Bridge, we had to, I think, spend five percent of the, the whole year.
Right, our contribution to the ready grant for the Mackinac Tower Bridge, or ready grid, it's five percent, so I'm assuming that reflects that, seems significant.
Okay, so anyway, DA fifty-one thirty point two equipment, that's not gonna be fifty thousand, what's it gonna be? Or fifty-two thousand? Or is it?
So, yeah, so this, this money is not going to the reserve. Right, so we, I now understand that, because.
Yeah, the fifty-two thousand, yeah, that's not, if you wanted to put money into reserve, it'd go under the point two R, but there's no sense of putting money in there.
Okay.
If we're taking money out.
So I would, I would tell you to make it, uh, I mean, there are things that I buy, like tires and things like that, that. Could fall in that category, it's new.
You're sixty-four almost now, ten thousand or?
That's what I was thinking.
Ten thousand for.
Equipment?
Fifty-one thirty point two.
So we're changing fifty-two thousand to ten thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And then the one underneath the R, we're leaving it as zero.
Correct.
Okay, okay, just.
Are we gonna, are we going to budget for money into equipment reserve?
I, I mean, we need to wait, cause if we're budgeting fifty thousand in the bridge reserve.
Okay.
You know, maybe next year, we put fifty thousand into equipment reserve.
Okay, so remember, if we're on the five-year plan, is that still kind of a, a snowplow, five-year, five-year replacement plan?
That is correct.
So we are at right now, um. Two hundred thirty-four thousand, about two hundred thirty-five thousand in the equipment reserve.
Four out of this year.
Which is.
Which we're gonna spend the one eighty, what you said, one forty-five?
If the truck shows up.
If the truck shows up, so there'll be a hundred thousand left there.
Yes.
I have a question, what happened when you bought the, to replace the wreck truck?
So that came out of the reserve.
Okay.
Last year, the truck we bought. That was last November, October.
That's right, so there was thirty-seven thousand that was paid by chips. Toward the purchase of that wreck truck. Wreck, wreck truck's replacement, and the rest came out of the reserve.
What reserve?
What we on that, wait a minute?
It didn't get moved from the.
That's right, it's not out of the reserve, it went out of the fund balance. He talked about, you know, cause I asked.
But at the end of the year, we were gonna move it.
Yeah, so I said, no, we never did move any money, I mean, I don't care, but it's out of fund balance.
I know, we had the reference.
Came out of fund balance last year.
And that's why I said, since Joe, um, Joe wants to build the.
Reserve.
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna leave it there, and since we're still.
Leave it there, just.
Back.
Right, well, that's, another, what I made a note here, is DB had a reserve last year, but, um. That, we couldn't have reserves in TB, the, DB and DA, so did money go from DB to DA? To DA?
They just moved, I just moved them.
Just moved it.
To the reserve or to the?
To the reserve, I just did an accounting, we're actually to fix that.
Okay, how much was that? Do you remember? No, I know, sorry.
Sure, right.
Yeah, sorry.
I know what I did a year ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, Mike.
Well, if we can, then, why don't we just leave the truck that we bought out of the fund, out of fund balance?
Right.
Leave the reserve there, so the reserve's whole for the next truck.
There was.
Right, right, instead of.
Cause we had the money.
Right.
Putting.
Right. Yeah, that, so the ideal is to be on a five-year plan.
So we buy a new truck every five years.
Right. Basically, yeah, two hundred fifty thousand, and just keep budgeting.
Five years, next year, probably three hundred.
Right, yeah, so hopefully.
Like sixty thousand a year into that.
Yeah, what I don't wanna see the town do is borrow money to buy vehicles, not when we're in a position. To use fund balance to put into reserves to dedicate it towards future equipment purchase.
Alright, so we're good with ten thousand for equipment, um. The repairs and parts, Dan, you got sixty?
Yes, I'd leave that.
Do you want it to go more?
It's quite a bit more than what. Really, twenty-one thousand now.
So, but the issue is, Scott, is that, so last year, I, I don't remember what we spent last year, forty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
Forty-nine thousand?
Twenty-one, yeah.
So if we lose one of these trucks, like, like we're, we lost two last year, two of the new, newer trucks went down, and each of those bills were like fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, it, when you send them up to stadium, it's.
Do you think you're happy with your comfortable?
I'm not happy with it, but it's, it's, the reality is that if we don't have it, it's one area where we, we tap it all the time.
And Dan, I'm gonna write down that figure, so don't use reserve for, and what was it, I'll say one twenty-four or something like that, what?
Oh, for the, for the payoff of the truck?
Correct.
One forty-five.
One forty-five.
Eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five.
And eighty cents.
Eighty cents, okay. So instead of using one, reserve, we'll just make it happen.
Okay.
I think that's what I'm hearing. Being suggested.
Well, we'll use reserves for this one, just take money out of reserves for the last one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nice. Okay, okay. Okay.
So we're good with machinery? The brush and weeds, the personnel for?
I would increase the contractual, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, thirty-one hundred dollars. Again, that's still based on twenty-two sixty-five, you need to bump that up three percent.
Yeah, but we were, we're thirty-six twenty-four for this year.
You gave me that thirty-one.
Right.
So you're thinking it's gonna be less next year?
No, I'm saying, yes, thirty-one hundred dollars times one point zero three.
Okay.
Where's your calculator? And then you're sending that one.
Thirty-one ninety-three, or you're thirty-two?
Mm-hmm.
My question is, why are you expecting more or less next year?
So what I've done is, I've rebalanced, yeah, rebalanced these funds.
Okay. That shows in the next one. DA or E four? For last year, we were forty-eight.
Okay, let's go in order, cause I don't wanna, okay, DA fifty-one forty point four at thirty-five hundred?
I'd like to raise it to forty-seven hundred dollars.
That's for the spring of the.
For the spring?
Yeah. Why is that going up so much more?
Materials. Oil. So the, uh, the spring went from sixteen hundred to twenty, what was it, twenty-five hundred dollars this year?
Okay, it's showing thirty-one, or thirteen, I mean.
Thirteen.
July thirty-first.
As, yeah, as of July, that's what you extended, Dan.
As of July, yeah.
They'll get paid in August or something.
They have.
We just want to pay it.
Okay, so point four is at forty-seven hundred, correct?
Forty-seven? Do you remember that?
I am.
Snow removal. That's eighty-four, last year it was forty-eight.
Right.
Cause you move things around.
Right, so I based it on road mileage. So, um, so snow removal for fifty-one forty-two versus, uh, for other governments.
So it's all coming out of there instead of other government?
So, yeah, so what I've done is, I, I'm treating snow removal, fifty-one forty-two is for the town.
Right, okay.
And then.
So down below, where it went from one oh seven to sixty-six, that's the difference there. Does this need to be increased by the three percent as well?
Yes.
And I get eighty-seven thousand, two sixty-eight. What's that contractual, remind me again, what's that money from?
The contractual for snow removal?
Yeah.
That's your sand, your salt.
Okay.
Your field.
You're good with that, seventy-two thousand.
I am. It has gone up. But I'm good with that.
Um, sixty-eight, oh, one two, or oh, one three is gonna be.
So what, what number?
I'm, I'm just getting ahead of myself for a minute.
Is that fifty?
So that'll be.
That.
Yeah, fifty-one forty-eight.
Point one, one, okay, is?
Sixty-eight thirteen. Sixty-eight oh one three.
Okay.
Good there with the contractual?
I am.
Is that disaster work something, Pat, you wanna take off, cause it looks like we haven't done anything with that?
Yeah.
Get off.
So would the employee benefits change then, if we increase things three percent?
I will, and so I'm gonna have to recount that when I start, because you went through them on Monday, right? Is that what you said?
I hope.
I will have to go through and redo this, which is scary, I'm, based on these, the way it's changing, and then, um, I'm still waiting for firm numbers on. Work in this town.
Well, it's up to the board, but, yeah, I, I don't see what the hurry is, I'd say go for the October meeting, we're still ahead of that.
Yeah.
So, because it really puts pressure on Pat to make some estimates based on, she doesn't, without accurate information.
Yeah, I mean, when I was talking at Eastern Shore, they said October would work better, so we can give you an estimate.
Yeah, Eastern insurers have been in contact with you two?
Oh, they have.
Eastern insurers haven't been in contact with me regarding equipment.
Yeah. Right, they left a message for you.
On the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
And I told her to email, because it's probably easier to communicate with you through email, so they'll be in contact with you.
Yeah, Peggy, I've been in discussions regarding the purchase of the mower.
Correct.
That was the. That was the big question. The value of the new mower.
Send a form. You know how she, she sent a form and she wanted it thrown out? Asking questions that got back in the room.
Still looking, still looking good for October.
That's not, not in sure, no.
Eastern insurers general liability, which is what I hope you guys were discussing right now, and I'm standing, it's not a form, questionnaire, I thought I gave it to you guys to fill out.
Yeah, I, I didn't fill out anything, it's got most of.
It was a while ago, right?
Few weeks ago.
It went to go ahead.
Okay.
So I don't need the, the budget till October.
Okay. Okay, cool.
So.
So, yeah, I'll be in.
Yeah. But if we can keep chugging along with this.
Yeah.
So for now.
So you'll take your benefits.
Skip the benefits for now.
Just for the public insurance.
Do you need those inner fund transfers?
No.
I mean, as long as you, I, that's what I'm hoping to do, is just get rid of these.
Now, these are the ones you were talking about, the equipment reserve and brick reserve, these. Ninety-nine sixty-two point four one.
No, I'm not using.
Do we need them?
No, that's why I.
Take them out.
So then we're gonna have to wait on the revenue side then, right? Because she still has to get figures and.
Revenues, I mean, I left all the property taxes or anything like that alone, I just wanted to see what we felt, so we could talk about it. That's why, you'll see it at the prelim. You never know, cause you wanna raise taxes and like that. I don't know, the closer I.
That was, the pilot was supposed to have been the solar farm, which is one of them, but that's standstill holder.
And then the A fund, I think it was the Renaissance Fair, which they lost their pilot program.
Or did they?
Cause they didn't pay, in lieu of taxes, they didn't pay the county, so they lost it.
Okay.
Yeah, a comment I might make on property taxes, I'm not adverse to raising them like one percent or two percent, which is like insignificant. Considering, remember, I shared with you.
I did the tax cap.
You figured the tax cap in there?
Well, I, I pulled the tax cap, and what they said, that you could raise taxes, you could go, we were at eight ninety-nine, I just, I should, nine forty-three. And you know, and somebody, the shapeovers.
I'm used to it.
Yes, I just, I just don't want you to get out of here and just. You're gonna look at this and see this, and I don't want you to, because I'm taking this right out.
Okay.
So I just didn't, I just wanted to see that.
Right.
Without even.
Right, right.
Because I think we probably made a decision with.
Right, would that, in your, um, do you think a one percent increase in property tax would be an issue?
I don't think so, I mean, at other towns, we tried to walk.
Go two percent. I would think go the two percent. And that's, I would think, yeah, I think, yeah, we almost have to the.
I can remember talking to an auditor, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, and the comment was made, it's better to raise it like one or two percent a year. Than to say, look, I'm not increasing your property taxes, and then the next thing.
Then buy it down the road, trying to balance the fund, fund balance.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, and I had the, a person said, um, and don't drop property tax, people don't remember that, they say they don't remember that. So just raise them one or two percent.
And if you do drop them, they're like, oh, thank you, my taxes went down thirty-two dollars this year.
If that.
But they'll bet you if they go up thirty-two dollars.
Yeah, so again, that's just my thought on it, just historically, that it's not a bad thing to increase the taxes one or two percent, it's maybe two percent for the property taxes.
But that's not gonna be two percent off this figure, we have to go off of the.
Whatever.
The caps, whatever you're.
Right, I just want everybody, I mean, I just gave you the nine forty-three, but if you look at your summary, it's nine sixty-two, because I had the SW two on there.
But you said you were gonna take that.
Different, that's all I was trying to, just.
Right. Right. Kill them, okay.
The. County plow contract. Budget for the ninety-nine or? Everybody else said they were gonna do is budget for the first payment, and then whatever came in after that would be.
Where, where are you, Scott? I think twenty-three hundred, DA?
DA twenty-three hundred.
Or whatever you say.
Seven. Does that make sense to budget? We've got a vote on it at the next meeting, whether we're gonna sign it or not, but. That's what we got to work, but I can't put down.
DA twenty three hundred. Under the revenues, so it's intergovernmental charges, services for other governments. So we're talking about the snowplow agreement, which we got today. Did you get a copy of that, Charlie?
I did not.
Here's an extra copy right here, it's in his mailbox, okay, well, I printed out one, you can see the figure we're coming up with, with that Scott mentioned.
Which that would be the initial payment, and then if we go, it's by out of per trip basis. When that's all figured out, then next spring you'd get another payment. Which is ninety nine thousand dollar payments could be before the end of the year, so that would be on this budget. Anyways, that twenty twenty two budget. So the twenty three budget, we don't know yet what's gonna be coming in. Well, so, yeah, because that's gonna be budgeted that for the end of the year for income, so. Guess it's gonna be the same or?
What's your thought on this contract? Okay. The good news is it's one year.
Yes.
Was the last one a one year?
Last one was a three year.
Correct, so this one is a one year, which means it's one year to at least see if it's gonna work or not. And it sounds like all of the towns are buying into this. You said everybody, everyone.
Almost every, I think everybody is, it was Charlie from Cato was kinda. Raffled his feathers a little bit, like, maybe I won't do it, but then he's like. I'd be the best one for him not to do, because they're right now anyways, so we can take it over, but it sounded like the rest of the supervisors were. It's pretty much what they presented. Back in our last meeting in May or June or whatever.
Who is me?
The county supervisors.
Okay.
We had decided, and Steve and the superintendents, county superintendents, was gonna go to Brian in the county, and say we wanted to fuel surcharge. We wanted to guarantee that you couldn't just, if they got towards the end of season. And they were over budget, he couldn't come in and say, well, we're gonna take this road, this road, this road from yet. We're gonna plow ourselves to save themselves money. And the one year contract, because everybody didn't, with it being new, everybody didn't wanna go into a three year contract. And then find out afterwards that it wasn't.
Working.
Working, so. Dan and I had gone last week and week before.
Week before.
And nobody had still got a contract, proposed contract. They were basically gonna say, since we've got a contract, we're at the eleventh hour, we wanted ten percent on whatever the contract was last year, just extend that. Thursday last week, it was supposed to have been a letter that went out that said that, you know, this is what they, we're gonna present to the county. The superintendent's committee went with two other supervisors, went right directly to the county highway superintendent. He said, this is what we're gonna send out, and he said, absolutely not, he says, this is the rewritten contract. With the adjustments in it that you guys asked for, this is what you're gonna, this is what we're proposing, this is what we're sending out. And I don't know what, when I walked in the meeting, I says, was that letter ever sent out, who Pat told me? Well, I think it was sent to the county, but I don't know if it was sent to the supervisors yet. Well, then you walked in and there was never even, I mean, they knew it wasn't being sent out. We were being given this. Which. Then it's got to be signed by October. Sorry. That's what we were told to me.
Yeah. I haven't looked at it, I printed it off, I was having a hard time just getting it mailed out or emailed out to you guys.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no problem.
Great.
I emailed as well, I think, too.
Yeah, I would really welcome your thoughts on it.
Sure.
Um, I think that it's a nice concession that it's not three years, it's one year, so that's a good start. Um, I know you have concerns about the.
So.
The additional, if it goes over the ninety nine thousand, then.
So how this works is that, so with every timing material contract I've ever done, and I've done millions of dollars of T and M. You wanna make sure that the rates reflect the risk. And I think Pat and Steve and the rest of the committee worked hard with Brian to raise the race, because Brian was looking at twenty seventeen New York State power rates. When this all started, and uh. It was just too low, so anyways, they worked hard on that. The the next thing is to make sure that there is, that the contract has no gray areas in it. You know, that T and M is a very subjective process, and. If the concern amongst the superintendents was that. If the county is reaching that point, because this ninety eight thousand or ninety nine thousand dollars represents two thirds. Of the payment that we normally would receive at the end of the year combined. With the uh, the December payment and the June payment would be roughly a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. So this is, this represents roughly two thirds of that. So the question is, is that, once you start, if we do have a moderate or a hard winner, and that's, who knows? Uh, what happens if we start exceeding this ninety eight thousand dollars, and how subjective will it become? As relates to validating if you were out there or if you were not out there. Uh, following or or what have you, so one of the concerns that Scott and I had was. One of the, one of the issues was the per trip requirement, where all county roads had to be plowed. In order to equate to a trip. So we can be on the north end, plowing Old State or Irwin three, four, or five times. And on the south end, once, maybe twice. So there's no way to be reimbursed for those extra trips on those roads. Under this, uh, and I haven't read this.
Okay.
Under what was proposed, I mean, am I, is it?
Yeah, and I think what we need to do is just one that charges a trip. Satisfy and get your pickup and go drive the remainder of the county roads.
So anyways, I mean, so that was, so that goes back to making sure there's no gray, because. Of all of a sudden, the county is starting to see where, or or, you know, that these. So I I I don't know how the billing here works, or the validation process, I haven't read this. But at the end of the season, we typically submit our attachment A or B.
Yeah, it has to be submitted monthly.
Yeah, okay, so, so he'll be able to monitor where this is coming in at. So the question is, at what point is there a concern where Brian isn't going to micromanage?
And we were, yeah, we were told by Steve and Pat that, you know, they had that discussion, that was one of the things. And Brian had said that it wasn't gonna be a micromanage thing, if, you know. What he's gonna look at is if we go out a hundred and thirty times, and Victor goes out a hundred and sixty times, he's gonna look at Victor, or vice versa. Because your neighboring towns, um, and I mean, not so much maybe us, but a neighboring towns, if one goes out. You know, fifty times a year more than the neighboring town, he's gonna look at it a little bit, why are they out so many more times? It's not gonna be so much a.
That's weird.
Nickel and dime, well, no, because what he's, what he's saying is, you know. Why you guys are right next to each other, you get to say, and you know, also Victory might not be a good example, you know, they use. Venice and, you know, two neighboring towns that border each other, and one plowed the roads thirty times more than the other one. You go look at the one that plowed more, like, are you trying to?
So I believe we went out a hundred and thirty three times, and I'm not even sure if I caught them all. And I think Victory was one, one ten, something like that, so, so there's.
I mean, but there's, there's a reason for that, and that's why I said we're not a good, you know, Victory and Cato might be a better comparison, Cato and Ira. Where they're side by side, where we're, you know, we're gonna probably go out more than any other town in the county, and that's understood.
Or we're overtaking.
That's what they all think, we go down there, and we're the, Sterling gets this one. And that the supervisor for troop was there, but why Sterling, I just, is I almost promise you. We've never had snow in troop like we get on a weekly basis in Sterling. Since you'll never plow the snow we do, well, it's not, you, when we get forty six hundred dollars and you get sixty two hundred dollars, I'm like, well. Send your guys up there and let them see, you know. But that's what they look at, they don't, you know.
Right.
But that's what we were told how that was gonna be, there wasn't gonna be micromanagement, and that was gonna be the, you know.
Well, that's the important thing, yeah, but that's, that's the concern.
Yeah.
So anyways, that's.
And that's another thing, why it's a one year instead of the three, because then you can go back and say, no, we don't think, and. What got into both meetings, I think, was a lot of the counties putting us over barrel, or we're putting the county over barrel, and. They can't afford to do that to us, and we can't afford to do that to them, and all this, but when it comes right down to it, it's the taxpayers. If. You know, any one of your kids on their way to work, on their way to school in the morning, at eight o'clock, and the county hasn't got up there to plow the road, that shame on us, I think. For being petty over, you know, not settling the contract and ending the contract, to plow the roads. You know, all in all, in the end, the taxpayers paid for it one way or the other. Um, you know, as long as we're getting compensated to do it, you know, I think. That the county's not gonna, you know, yeah, the county, if we don't do it, the county's gonna do it, or the county's gonna get. Victory or Hannibal or somebody else are gonna contract to come in and do it, but they're not gonna do it like our guys do it. You know, that's. Right, wrong, or indifferent, they're, those roads are in our town and.
You gotta drive the roads to get someone to town.
You gotta drive them roads to get, yeah, so you're driving those roads anyways. You know.
The whole idea of the towns, only, they're there, only. County roads as well, because I used to plow when I worked for Townable Kid.
Yeah.
We plowed many miles of county roads, and did that just for that reason.
Yeah.
Made sense.
Because you're driving over it anyways.
But.
And if somebody comes off the town road and gets on a county road, and they're pushing eight inches of snow on the road, you know who they're gonna call?
Sure.
They're gonna call you regardless.
So, but the point is, Scott, is that, at the end of the day, as long as you're being reimbursed for your.
Yeah.
That's the key.
If we get reimbursed, though, I think, and I think you agree with me that this is a fair deal.
I do.
But it's, and that's the thing that we're gonna have to be diligent on.
We have to be reimbursed, because, you know, like I said, on this per trip thing, this.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, but I think, you know, that's how they wanna do it, every time the trip goes out, we target for a trip.
So you said you went out on.
Thirty three times, I think.
And then that's times.
Thirty two, twenty, yes.
And you think. That. That is a fair.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
There are things in it that I don't dis, or that I don't agree with, but, like I said, the the guys did as well as they could with Brian.
Yeah.
So. You know, that's, uh, they negotiated and they did the the best they could, so.
Let's say I come out to Karen. Which, at the end of the day, that's only ten thousand dollars more than we got last year, but we probably made more money out of last year, I think. Beans where, when Brian was here, we were probably getting over big trouble. He realizes it now. You know.
I don't know, we went out a hundred and thirty three times, and we, we, so what that says is that.
If we do the same thing again.
County won, yeah, with the flat rate.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, yeah, no, I agree with you, and they're gonna find that out again, hopefully it's after the one year.
That's right.
Yeah. So anyways, this we should be discussing Monday night tonight.
Right, right.
So let's keep moving.
Well, are we gonna?
We wanna put in something in there, but.
Are we gonna?
It's gotta be, we gotta figure the June payment. From this year's contract, plus whatever we're figuring out next year, so we should be. What we're budgeting in. DA.
So what you're looking at here, Scott, is that you would be collecting a payment in June. And then in December, but December remains to be seen.
December for next year.
Right, we do, we have no idea what that is. And I'm not sure when this payment is paid.
It's usually.
I mean, I haven't read through this, but.
Payment and is, the county shall pay honor before December sixth.
How much?
The ninety nine to oh nine fifty eight.
So this is all, so no.
December sixth, so none of this here will be, the only part that would be on next year would be the overage.
The overage.
Plus the December payment for next year.
Right, but we, we do not know what that is.
But we almost have to budget something for it.
Something, yeah, I mean, it might go up, right?
But I think we need to budget, I would say at least one fifty. And then if, so if next fall comes, we don't have a contract or the contract's different, at least we have that budgeted. And if things change, your expenditures are gonna change anyway, so you're not gonna need, you know what I'm saying? If we don't have anything budgeted, and then we end up plowing for next year, we're not gonna have the money to budget to pay. That first two months of plowing, or three months. November, December, front of October, whatever.
I I I don't have a feel for it.
Dude, I'm saying, Pat, we have to have something. Have something to cover, paying the guys in the spring.
So you're thinking they should be, this should be increased?
At least left the same. So leave it the same and.
It's, it's still a significant reduction.
As you put it. I can't see us doing it for any less than what we did last year.
So.
Free budget for that, we're still gonna get the difference payment in June. So if we budgeted the one.
That's, that's where.
One sixty seven, the payment we got in June was a fifty six. Yeah, if we get a payment this year, ninety nine, that's gonna put us in.
Just get another payment this year, ninety nine.
If we sign this contract, we're gonna be the payment in December of ninety nine.
For the twenty two.
For the twenty two, twenty three budget, twenty two, twenty three plow year, we'll get this ninety nine thousand in December.
Right, but if you get it in December, it's going on the twenty twenty.
Right, so.
I'm saying, I always go low.
No, and what I'm saying here is, last year, the contract was, was, was for one sixty five. We've already got fifty six this year.
Right.
So. We budgeted for one sixty seven, so that ninety nine that we get here is gonna go towards.
Twenty two.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty two, right, this ninety nine. So.
Why would you want?
I'm not saying increase it, I'm saying leave it the same, but the one sixty seven. If you feel that would be.
You're saying. You're saying leave his figure ninety, ninety eight, seven eighty two, or you want it to go be one sixty seven, okay?
I'm thinking.
When I thought that they're gonna pay us once.
Leave it at the ninety eight.
It's better to be low on the revenue.
Leave it at ninety eight. I mean, we can round it up, so it's.
Yeah.
Round it, round it up to a hundred.
Do you feel comfortable with one sixty seven or?
No.
Do one hundred and.
Not at all.
I know, that's fine.
Cause we're not even gonna meet that this year. That's what I'm saying.
Twenty two budget and if we have to absorb costs to cover that revenue loss, we can. Um, all the way down to the, you know, if we, if, if the contract wasn't signed. Based on the numbers that I see, where we don't buy any more salt. And fuel, we've topped off, so we're good there. So we're, we would have a delta of nine thousand dollars. That I get, I need to figure out where, where that would come from. So.
Cause the way it stands now, if we get this, if we sign this contract and we got that, we're a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars and we budgeted one sixty seven.
Right.
That's twelve short right there.
Yeah, but we're good on, I mean, I can handle that.
Yeah.
But the point is, is that I, worst case scenario, I ran the numbers and we would be nine thousand dollars short. From, from the standpoint of expenditures versus revenue.
So with one seventy five, do you think?
No.
No, no, you want it. I would say a hundred. Are you comfortable with a hundred, Dan? Just for an even number?
I'm gonna leave it to the board. I have no idea where things are going.
Gotta have a figure.
I don't, not for next year.
We do.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred thousand?
Okay, so what number?
One hundred thousand.
No, no, DA.
You good with that, John?
Okay, so DA twenty three hundred will be one hundred thousand. And DA twenty three oh two.
That's the village, is that the contract number?
Those numbers are good. Right, so that represents the village and the county parks, yes. Yes.
The solid equipment? Oh, I haven't been in a.
What's there?
Sometimes we use solid equipment, but we don't budget for it as far as, unless you know like what you're gonna get.
So Dan, you okay with the, in the permit, the contract wants you to snow ice equipment activity law? He wants this information monthly, but it looks like the guys are gonna have to set it up daily if they're plowing snow every day, not this. Am I correct in assuming that?
Oh, yes. Well, Dan will be filling this out for you.
Yeah, how do you do Sterling Station Road? Cause I know the guy. Yeah, cause Kurt used to do Sterling Station and you turn off onto Waldron Road, then you get back on and go down the Sterling Station, turn on Thompson and then back on and.
Well, it goes back to what we're talking about. I mean, you can go down Irwin five times and. Can be blowing like hell up there and on the other end, it can be sunny down in Scott. And, you know, so you're sitting there, I'm burning up manpower.
Few, I think you gotta call it a trip. I really do. I don't know how you. If you lasted on a per trip thing, you give them the choice of trips, plowing where it's snowing or trips.
Yeah, but it says here, time in, time out.
So if they put the natural time.
Well, and then, yeah, but that's.
Oh, yeah, well, what is, if you don't do it, they can reject it.
But you're not gonna do each single road.
I'm going.
Do a trip, if you say, so if you say. Brandon trip is this, it's. You know, each time they go out. Cause it doesn't have, oh, yeah, cause you gotta avoid. Route number, but if, if Brandon goes out, you put the date, Brandon, whatever. His thing, he's on route two or whatever. He left at whatever time, he came back in at whatever time. How many overtime and how much mix he put in. You don't have to do it, that's for that trip. So then you're gonna say that trip, Brandon's trip is if it's. What's a normal trip?
But it says at the top, following operations on county roads.
Right, so.
But if it's part of that trip though, trip number two, say is. Four miles of county road and four miles of town road, you're gonna have a record somewhere to that, so that if they question it. You say, well, route number two, you say, yeah, that's this road, there's covered this much of the county roads. You know, if it's fifty fifty, it's fifty percent of the mix went to that, but I put in, you know, he fills the truck when he gets back. Put in how much you put in.
But number six is slowing ice equipment activity arm with the town.
Well, the other hurdle we have, Scott, is the night truck.
We can do that as a route, whatever route that is, you know, that if you got four routes during the day, then night trucks.
It gets goofy. It's goofy.
But they're only gonna pay by trip. Do a bike trip.
Read the contract. It doesn't say trip.
But that's how it pays is by the trip.
It does say that, but.
The trip is considered the effort required to plow and treat all of the. Seven. The trip is considered the effort required to plow and treat all of the twenty five point five three county mile roads within each town and village. So if it doesn't mean plowing and treating, you don't have to plow and treat it. But you're still going on a trip and you're taking care of the parts that are done. So my thing is if you go out on a trip and all the county roads. Are in good shape, then that trip covered. You know, if you go out on a trip and you don't plow something that needed plowing, then you'd be breaching the contract. See what I'm saying? I.
The way I wrote this is that, that you have to physically travel twenty five miles of every road.
But it doesn't say that you can't log less than twenty five point five three miles. So what if you just added all of the park trips together?
That was, that was what I had written in the clarifications and I believe it was rejected. I don't know.
This is a point of gray area. When we are having this discussion and can't come up with a, well, yeah, it's right there. So you can imagine, and that's just us, the different interpretations of this.
So that's, that's, this is related probably more to my question than the snow and the way, snow and ice equipment activity law, number six. It says, the town village shall provide the county with one detailed description of each plowing route. The town village will provide the county with the times the trucks are on the roads and report that information monthly. So again, that brings me back to the question. So each and every time that a town truck is on a county road. They're writing down their times that they're spent on that county road?
No. The town village will provide the county with one detailed description of each plowing route, so if plowing route is. Listen, listen, I'm getting there, Charlie. If each plowing route, so if plowing route number one is Sterling Station Road, Cosgrove Road. Simmons Road, Teach Out Road, Shortcut Road, Humphrey Road, if that's that plowing route. You send that to the county and say plow route number one consists of these roads. These are the county roads we're plowing. On plow route number one, okay? Now the next sentence. The town will provide to the county with the times the trucks are on the routes and report that time information monthly. So each time that truck goes out and plows route one, you put down route one. He plowed that route from four AM to eight AM. That's you, you reported that that truck, that that driver plowed that during that time. You only have to report, report that route once. So. You're not reporting it each time, okay, he was on Sterling Station Road for this long, then he went off.
So they're gonna figure.
That, you're gonna say what that route is, so you're gonna guesstimate. There's four miles of county road, there's four miles of town road on this route. So generally speaking, fifty percent of it's town, fifty percent of it's county. But that's when you do that route, you're covering that amount. So at the end of it, all three or all four routes you have. Have to add up to this twenty five point five three miles of county roads.
How much extra paperwork would this be for you?
I haven't even thought about it. Right. So. I will be out, I will not be inspecting the roads as much as I normally do. Because you're gonna be spending no time keeping detailed records of this so that you get reimbursed. It's a lot more work. So basically what it means.
The highway guy has a clerk. She puts in twenty hours.
I can believe it. That's what this is gonna be.
Because of other projects we have.
Right, so they're gonna do their time in and time out, who's gonna figure what that is?
You keep track of each time they go out anyways, okay?
Not at a, not on a per. Per trip basis. I, I, what I, right now, what I track is when they leave and when they come back into the barn.
Right. That's a trick.
Not, no, sometimes what we'll do is we'll keep running going. We'll come back and start over again. If they don't need sand, if they're, if they're chasing, if they're chasing wind, right?
So when you, when you said they plowed a hundred and thirty three times.
That was my best guess.
That's, if they plowed twice in one day, you count that as two times. It's about three times.
That's right, three.
So you're.
So, but like I said, there are, those, those numbers don't reflect like Irwin Road or Mc- or. Old State Road where Kyle hits it five times, right? It, you know, he, that's what I'm trying to say is that. We're going up and down those roads a lot more than just. That's where it gets goofy.
I think you just, you know, as long as he plows everything on his route, if he plows it five times in one day, he put down five times.
So I can put down five times for, let's just say Kyle, for the north end.
Yeah, cause it's asking for, it's asking for routes.
Right, so, but, but so let's just hypothetically say five times for Kyle on the north end. But Joe and Brandon on the south end, it's only twice. So we effectively only covered. The county roads, all the county roads, the twice.
And we can't get.
I tried. That's what the draft agreement I sent to everyone, and Brian has a copy of as well.
Yeah, because on that one, it says regardless of the number of trips performed.
What I did is I, I said, what I had suggested was that each man counts how many times. They run that road. It's an easy thing to do. So let's just say Kyle runs Old State five times, Irwin three times. You know, two times on shortcut, one time on. Whatever other road, you add up what that total mileage is and you divide it by twenty five point, whatever it is. That would equate to the number of trips. That's fair. That's fair. That's not what it says.
If they don't want to do that, then.
I'm telling you.
Time they plow it. It says.
I'm just saying.
As long as the road's plowed and treated.
You can talk with Steven with that home and negotiate with them.
How are they gonna know if you, if you only plowed the north end twice? Well, wait a minute, if you plow like Old State Road seven times, how they got know that you don't plow the whole route seven times?
Because there's people that live in town that report back?
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna argue that if the, if you plow it seven times and the rest of the roads don't need plowing. Your job is to have that road clean, if it's. If that's the trick, whether you run the whole route or not, if that road's clean, I think you counted as a trip.
I'm not arguing that, Scott, I'm arguing what's in the contract, so if this becomes a sticky wicket.
Right.
It's not there. It doesn't speak to it like that. You're gonna lose.
I guess my concern is the whole situation that I brought up was, we still have the time in and time out, right? So if you're going by, just keeping track of the county roads, you're on that road. You come in, let's say for an example, nine AM. You hit the county road till nine thirty, whatever. Who is writing this down where you're plowing your gravel truck and?
Yeah, but you're not, you're doing it, that's why you're doing the route number. When you go out to do your route, your route, it doesn't list specific county road, it's your route. So if you go out and plow your route.
I was out around four, I think I was, in the Towne Oakin, and all my roads were listed county, town. And we weren't going through this horseshit, but I'm just saying.
That's why, that's why you list your route, what your route is, you put what roads are on your route, give that to the county. And then you say I plowed this route, so they know you plowed these county roads.
You're asking for time in and time out.
For the route, not for each road.
For their road, right?
For, no, for the route.
It says county roads. Plowing.
Down on the bottom, it says date, so you'd put date if your employee number five, you put five. If you're route number four, you put route number four, the time you left the barn, nine AM, the time you got back. Nine thirty. It's during the day, during regular hours, straight time. You put, you know, so if you work four hours a straight time, you put four. If it's on the weekend, you're getting paid overtime. You put four hours in overtime. Then you put, if you loaded the truck up. You put, you got back, the truck was full when you left and you got back and you put two scoops in it, whatever, two scoops weighs. You put that down.
Hey, so. We were saying that, but it's not saying, says plowing operations on county roads.
It, it's not saying it's asking for the whole route.
The slots you fill out, there's no place on the bottom to put what county road you're on. It's your route number.
You sure are darning home on point about this contract. Because look at how differently this is being interpreted. So it definitely has flaws in, in inter- interpretation. I don't know, we're not gonna miss out on here.
Trying to say it's not reasonable to think that, I don't assume you guys have wingman anymore, cause we sure should didn't. Who's writing this down when you pull from a town road onto the county road, on your route, the exact time you're doing it? You're gonna pull over, stop, look at your watch, look at your clock, oh, it's this time, write that down.
That's, that's not what they're asking for, Charlie. They're asking for your route number, what time you left for your route, what time you got back. Cause how are you gonna do tons of mix? You're gonna get out and.
Well, you left and you.
When you leave off, alright, and that's when your time in, time out, that's when you left and you came back. On that route.
We looking at this too?
Yeah.
Who, county attorney?
Just make a chair, there's a.
Dan, did he do that one?
He looked at that, yes.
Okay.
I have a question, what you were talking about, Scott, where you said as long as they do a circuit, right? So, but when. Well, what if, like, okay, if they actually did the whole circuit, that's doing the gas and the time.
I will, I will ask, that's all figured in, that's where you get your per trip price. I will ask Brian to be here Monday.
But, yeah, but if he's doing like Old State like eight times and then, you know, one road two times, then. It would actually be more beneficial for everyone involved if it was per fraction or per percentage. Then.
Not for us. Cause if he does, if he plows Old State Road eight times, but he doesn't do the rest of it. And you charge him for eight times because the other roads don't need to be plowed, and in that trip, you satisfied that. Every road on that route was plowed. And treated. Then you charge them eight times and we benefit because we only had to plow half of it eight times. And you get credit for the other part.
I'd want Brian to sign off on that one.
But that would be a time that the people wouldn't, like the guys would not be plowing someplace else. You know, like it would be almost a waste of time. And then if they.
Yeah, but they don't need to be plowing, it's snowing hard there and it's not snowing somewheres else, they don't need to be plowing somewheres.
What, what, the, the most important part, Scott, is that at the end of the season, you don't wanna get surprised. Because all of a sudden, if all these trips that you did, and you're not being reimbursed for whatever reason.
I think we do the one year and see if we don't, yeah, and see if we don't get reimbursed. And then, then we got something to argue about, and sitting here saying that we're gonna get screwed and not reimbursed is.
How are they gonna question if you put down so many trips, saying, are they gonna say that you didn't do that many trips?
Oh, yes.
How?
I don't know.
How are they gonna know that?
I don't know. I mean, I mean, but the, the point I'm trying to make is, it's important that it's clear or it's understood. So if we do five trips on Old State and only two on shortcut. That it's, that is acceptable. You, you, you don't wanna get caught out there and, and, you know. A month later or two months later, well, that's not acceptable. For whatever, whoever, whatever the concern is.
Does anybody monitor the county roads, see between?
County, county highway superintendent, that's where it goes to work.
That's it, I mean, cause there's times, you know, I know in this town, certain roads. Can get hammered, I, I mean, Lake It's Ice like a summer gun, and just. Quarter mile away, sunshine and not that extreme, but no snow. So that's what we're gonna end up arguing over?
What?
We're gonna argue over whether.
That's what we're talking about.
That's what I think the time in and time out of what route you're on will tell you what roads so-and-so plowed. Time in, time out, how many times you did it, and where did you do it? Snow, it's wind that blows and you have.
Twenty years of my life. But the point, to your point Charlie, is that the whole purpose of the document this year. Is the document that you were out there in those same timeframes when you're in and out, so a trip is in and out. So if, if I call Kyle and just to handle the north end, which is the idea, and that happens, I just. Kyle, the south end is great, well, you're adding to the north end, or Joe's on the south end. So what this, so it'll just show Joe, time in and time out on the south end. And no one up here on the north end. Or vice versa, or some combination there are. So that's where it gets goofy.
Yeah, but I think you counted as a trip, you took, you satisfied, you kept the roads clean on that trip, every, you sent out. What needed to be done to clean that road, to clean the roads.
So anyways, it's.
Just a quick question, why is West Bay Road taken off this list?
I guess the county wants to plow.
Isn't that a red county?
We plow for the village.
There's a Wayne County, might be Wayne County or.
West Bay.
Yeah, but the county.
There's a piece of it. There's a piece of it up to the border, that's the counties. The village is the first piece, and then you've got where the double culverts are, that's the county's piece. And then Wayne County, Woke, picks up somewhere over there by that hard corner, and they run up to Colocus. And then we take it up from there. Cause Brian took it off.
Okay, so they're gonna be going down Old State or West Bay Road and then lift the plows up and keep them going?
That's what this is implying, or he's sending.
Is that what we do now?
No.
Who plows Woke?
Oh, Woke it plows Woke it. I mean, there are.
This is county.
Right. Right, I know, but you're saying you don't pick the plow up on.
Yeah, yeah, and they do as well as that, because they go up to Ingersoll Drive. Right, so they, you know.
But who's plowing, so where's the county part? Between.
Yes, somewhere in there is where the.
So is Wayne County coming down to K Cat?
Yes.
If they plow off K Cat, then they're plowing the county road there.
Wayne County plows roughly from where that hard corner is to Colocus. And then they pick up, lift up their plow typically. We help each other out, I mean, there are days when there's. You know, we'll help each other out, there's, we always do that, but typically, you know, Kurt's got the next section plowed. And they head on down to Ingersoll Drive and, and capture Ingersoll Drive. So one thing that, uh, when we do help each other out, when we help out Woke it, one of the things that Woke it does not do is, is apply sand. If they happen to come down through and do drop their plows.
What I'm saying is maybe they're gonna drop their plow when they come off the K Cat road, cause they plowed K Cat, right? So they plow when they come off the K Cat road, if they plow from there to Colocus. Is that the part of the county road that they're taking off?
No. They're taking off that section there by Smith Road. Our way to Smith Road. We know where the two double culverts are.
The river sticks.
That is, that is Cayuba County Road, that is Cayuba County.
That's K Cat road, there's Smith Road turns into K Cat road, right?
Down farther.
Okay, so I'm thinking K Cat road and Smith Road there.
Okay, that's where we're confusing.
So Wayne County comes in that way, don't they?
I'm not sure exactly where they come in, but.
That's something.
I mean, Smith Road, our line ends up there halfway down Smith Road.
Just don't. That's the only county road there is there, is that.
Whatever, right, it point, what, two?
Two, two miles. So anyways. You want me to have, see if Brian will come Monday, or you wanted to tell Brian to see if he'll come Monday?
All, all I think you need to do is ask him the question that you've asked here.
Cause I'm gonna say it and everybody's gonna argue with me.
Yeah, or I would get something, maybe kind of, is some form of confirmation. Is, is this acceptable, right, as it relates to. Should be.
I would go a step further and suggest that they get in writing. Uh, informational instruction sheet to go along with that log and correct the words so it reads county.
Says county.
Redefinite, not mine, what's yours say?
What, you're looking at the log?
Yes, what does yours say?
Says plowing operations on county roads.
Mine says C O U T Y.
Tell them we didn't plow any county roads. We'll take the county roads, just. Good on that?
Okay, so go back to DA twenty-three hundred is a hundred thousand, right? Anything else on that page?
So you do, you need to raise.
The bottom portion probably could take all right on too.
Fifty-one ten, add the three percent to that?
Yes. DB.
Oh, okay.
Six-nine, nine-eight-nine. The contractual, you put that in there?
One ninety, yes.
The chips, twenty-five.
Is that pretty much a given? Do we not know, I'm not sure of this.
Right, so it varies from your year, it's been going up. So, yeah, so it's.
I. It's, when I met with Mr. Barkley.
Okay.
Said, don't get used to it going up.
Okay, so maybe you want. Beware.
Beware.
So right now, the chi, the chips for this year, this is under the value, the chip values for this year. So we have two hundred and fifty-eight thousand in chips. So, yeah, I ran with one eighty-five. They added a note, a new program, it's called Take the Potholes. Yeah, so.
Yeah, he said, don't get used to that.
I'm not surprised.
I'm pretty generous with it. So equipment, you're good with fifty-one thirty point two? Fifty-one forty point one hundred brush weeds.
I'd like to, yeah.
What's DB fifty-one thirty point four-two? It's, the point four is a contractual and you added, had, put a two on it. So I didn't know what you were telling me, are you, is it something special? Are you saying it's equipment?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Is it the tractor?
Before, yes, well, before two, let's see what they have here.
It only has to be under equipment though, it's not contractual.
Correct. I know, that's why I was. Probably really, you were trying to differentiate, you should have put point two-one or something rather than point four-two. That's why I wanted to know what it was, cause I wanna, I really would like to change that.
So I didn't put the four, I don't know where the four-two came from. The, the, the actual number.
What's the sixty thousand?
Tractor, does that come out of DB or?
Well, the, the, the tractors are being paid for the chips, right? So this, I'm trying to figure out what the. You have a number tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, I was. I won't be here in the afternoon. So I can't return the key.
Oh, my office?
I don't have to check on that. I've not seen it, just.
You got to check so that it's something. I can read my key.
When did you want to fill? What time?
Well, I can do it Tuesday, as long as it's, you know. Or I can do it Wednesday afternoon, I got to have to the dentist in the morning.
For equipment repairs, that's what I. But let's just take a look at something here, because I may have written it twice.
You still have the key to my office too? You still have the key to my office?
I don't know, yeah, I can check, I have a, a key thing that I've had, so I can check and see if it's all beginning.
That shouldn't be there, Pat. There should be DA fifty-one thirty-four-two.
Okay, that's why.
That should have been.
You found it, right?
I did.
So it's just crossing.
It doubled it.
So it's already on DA?
It's on DA. Yes. There should be what, no four-two then?
No four-two?
Right.
Yeah, it's not even the, you count.
That's right.
Whole line.
Wouldn't it be just a point four? Was that on there? I had to add that, and I didn't know where I got the number from.
Right, right.
But I noted I wanted to ask what.
But the thought was equipment repairs, but I doubled it, I doubled that down.
Okay, so B fifty-one thirty point four-two is zero.
I don't even think there's a DB fifty-one thirty-four-two.
There's my added. Yeah, but it's in the tenancy budget.
Yes.
Yes.
So DB fifty-one forty point one. Then twenty-five thousand, does that need the three percent added to it, or is that?
Yes, in the.
Are we doing?
Go ahead, yes. We should have have the three.
Should have the three percent.
That twenty-five thousand has the three percent in it?
It does not.
Okay, so it.
Twenty-five thousand seven fifty. Then the D A. Russian weeds. That's for when we mow the village.
This is, this, this year is primarily for the town. D A is for the village.
Right.
Right.
Right. I'm thinking the, like, I'm looking at the contractual.
Yes.
Fifty-one forty-point-four.
Right.
Shouldn't that have been more? Than the, the A one for the spraying and stuff?
So the, the D A fifty-one forty-point-four is. Forty-five hundred dollars.
Forty-seven. Forty-seven hundred.
Yeah.
D A fifty-one forty-point-four.
D A is forty-seven.
It's forty-seven hundred.
Yeah, this one's forty-five.
Actually wanted to increase it to ninety-five. To include some more costs for, are more rental.
D B?
D B.
Or more rent.
Right. When we use the R more.
Okay.
So that's thirty-two hundred dollars a week.
This one's a nothing. D B fifty-one forty-point-four. Should be, how much? Ninety?
Ninety-five hundred.
Where'd you pay for that? This year, we haven't yet.
You're gonna see a show up here.
This, we just didn't.
We just used it. So part of it was used. Part of the expense was used. With the village. And D A.
Yeah.
Part is going here and part is going against contractual. Under the two-hundred-thousand-dollar line item.
The nonsense. Just all that. The non-property tax distribution. What? The revenues.
I love that with the same.
We can increase that?
Well, we can, but.
You want to.
I mean, as you guys, it's not my decision, but D B is kind of, has to help me to calm down. Every time we go over on the sales checks, I throw it at D B. I just.
A little more to be used to.
We talked about that the other night. Yeah, because you can always transfer from B to D B. So you, you're not supposed to transfer from D B to B. Right, so if you've got it in B and you need it in D B. Right, I mean, I don't know, I was just. And maybe you want to increase it because.
I think when we get down, see what the numbers are. Increased a couple things quick, but to see what we end up. Six-six-two.
Okay, here's a little, are you at D B twenty-two-ten or maybe in that area?
Yeah, that's seventy-four thirty-seven.
It says question mark for Dan, so you're not was, and I guess I would look to Dan for. Certification.
Right, so this is, this is the amount we are paid or will be paid for mowing the county roads this year.
Is that gonna be the same next year, you think, or?
I don't know. Brian had mentioned going T N, and that was the last I heard.
Probably be figuring this out about. June tenth, you think? Next year?
I have no idea.
We believe it the same somehow. Better to be under than. Thinking of telling you less than that, we're not gonna do it, probably.
Right, we, we ended up mowing the county roads four times this year, so. We hope to only do it twice. Lot of the towns are dropping it. Because it's just become. Not cost-effective. Right now, we're being paid, I think, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. For road mile.
For the season.
For that whole season. So he gave us a little bit for our field. He bumped it up.
Didn't he say we only had to do it twice, or?
Minimum.
Minimum twice.
And.
But it has to be a certain standard. You know, I walked down roads four times and it's well, they could have tripped in the county road to the driving way by.
Well, you just, you know, they, they needed to be cut, so.
Safety becomes a factor too. I mean, I was just driving around with the blind spots when.
Intersections and stuff.
That green road, getting off of green road and to Old State Road, that's tricky.
Right.
Yeah.
So anyways.
Leave it there.
I don't have a feel for it. You know, I, I just do not know where the county's going to be this time next year. We're assuming that. You know, the county isn't going to take back more. With what's going on in the world. I know they can't do it for less than this.
So we leave in B twenty-two-ten the same?
Thank you, Sean.
It's really up to the board if they want to, you know. Continue to mow the county roads. And assuming that the county wants us to mow the roads, so I'm assuming that they will. I just don't know what the payment.
What it's gonna pay.
Yeah, I just, you know, with. How hard we worked on the plow agreement.
I think we leave it. You might thought we'd be leaving in there. If it comes to where we're not plowing it.
It's not.
It's not gonna hurt us. You're not, I'm mowing. If we're not mowing it. It's not gonna hurt us. If we do mow it. We end up mowing it for more. We're still gonna be on the. Positive side of it, right? Since. If it should. It's not really gonna adjust the time. Manpower time, but.
Well, I guess the way to look at this guy is that if you leave it in there. And if things don't work out as relates to whatever the offer is. Um, we absorb the cost, or we absorb the, uh, you know, we, we're careful about our expenditures. Right, it's, it's not like it's. A hundred thousand dollars.
You're gonna have a little less expenditures anyway, if you're not. You have a little less, I mean, it's not come out, come out to maybe. A third of that.
Right, right. So.
Or you do. See that or take it all the way out, and then if you do do it, it's.
It's, it's, it's gravy then.
Yeah. And I, I would think. I would think they're gonna have us do it, I don't know if it's gonna. I would think they're gonna want us to do it.
It, it goes back to this thing where, you know, what is the T N? Scenario again, which is like, wow. So all I know is that the towns. That a number of towns have stopped doing it this year, so there's fewer towns doing it. I, I don't know where it's going, but. You know.
What's everybody think, wanna just take it right out, and if we do it, it's gravy, if we don't. Then we're not losing the revenue.
Is it worth? Asking Brian, assuming he'll be.
Yeah, he's coming in one day.
And say we're working on a budget right now, and we're entertaining the notion of making budgeting zero. So.
We can make another question, ask him then, what's your thoughts on?
Sure, sure. I mean, like I said, the last time he and I talked about it was.
Well, this is, you know.
It was.
Never, you never approached. We never got a contract to do it.
Right.
The same as the plow, you know, now we're.
Eleven tower.
Eleven tower, eleven-thirty.
Eleven forty-five.
I mean, we could get the snow in another couple of weeks.
No, don't say that. Two more months.
We're gonna have to walk the sand.
So anyways. I would tell you to, to leave it off, or it makes no difference to me. Because it's not that big of a number.
We're gonna have till the October meeting anyways, we can ask Brian one day. If he comes.
It's worth asking because it kind of sends a message, he'll get wind of it.
Yeah.
And he'll go, oh, they didn't budget anything for the.
Yeah.
Mowing.
And that needs to be approached, is are we gonna, we look at what kind of increase are we looking at for mowing? So leave that for question mark. Everybody?
Yeah.
And when you change the fire districts to the contracts and. To see how.
Did that, yeah.
But. The storm sewer district. Did you get a quote for?
Their, whatever it was. Per time they come out. Twenty-five hundred dollars, so. There's no way. At fifty-five dollars in E D U. Times. I got the numbers in there, whatever I figured out, it comes out to thirty-one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Seventy-five dollars. Cause what it comes out to is what we're gonna get. By levying fifty-five dollars at E D U. All in places. I don't know how you're supposed to do O and M on it.
Oh.
And, and I can't find anything at all. Where the figures were drawn up, or anybody came with that fifty-five dollar number. But. By the resolution, we can't, the first year, we can't go over that fifty-five dollars.
But it says estimated.
Well, estimate, but.
Estimated.
Yeah.
Right. You need to check on.
It needs to be. Hundred-and-fifty, probably. But, my question, and this is. I wanted to ask Dan this. Since that's. Basically, a ditch. A closed ditch. And the funds like to clean the basins out. And do that. Should build one of the highway ones, you know?
People in the district should pay there. Not, not me, not you, not Joan, not Dan. People that live there should pay for that.
The same as cleaning a ditch, so. I don't know how this, I approach, that's just something I was thinking, I don't.
Sounds like an attorney question, or I'll say. Maybe. Yeah. But it says it's estimated annual cost is fifty-one.
No, you see what I'm saying?
I do, it's, it.
I mean, if you put a bridge in.
I guess it, it goes back to how that whole thing was set up.
Then I don't, I can't find, all I can find is the resolution, I can't. Find where anybody did the math, or where they came up with fifty-five dollars, or. How they planned on. Paying back a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. At fifty-five dollars a E D U, then there were. Forty-eight E D Us or something.
Have you talked to Barton and the Judas?
They were. I can ask them, but they wouldn't have been part of figuring the. I could ask Matt. If he knows, I don't know. Or Brian, I could ask Brian. Cause him and June were the ones that figured out that. But if you figured fifty-five dollars a E D U.
Right, times forty-eight.
Times forty-eight, I think. Whatever the number was, came up to like thirty-one-hundred dollars, just to pay back the debt service, you'd have to do it out for fifty years.
How much was it?
One thirty-five is the.
Times forty-eight?
Well, fifty-five times forty-eight. I ain't going to do that.
No, it's, it just was. Twenty-six hundred dollars. Twenty-six forty.
So how many years you gotta do that to get a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's without any maintenance or?
That's repaying the A fund.
Repaying the A fund.
Fifty-one years.
Paying us back, so there's no interest on her, fifty-one years.
Yeah, there's no.
No, so that's no.
And you can't carry.
You can't carry. It's not, the, the project came in under budget, so it's not gonna be the whole four-hundred-and-thirty-five probably. But still, there's no room. That twenty-six hundred dollars. If we have to hire a U C to do it. Isn't gonna pay them. I mean, estimated fifty-five, but estimated fifty-five isn't. Two-hundred. That you would need to do. But I mean.
I can't believe that there's no paperwork on this. No.
You.
I know.
I'll give you, I mean, I'm.
I know.
I promise you, if there is, I don't know where it is. That's, I mean.
I, I just can't.
You want, you want me to call Brian and see if you can come one day? And I'll ask him if he.
Well, how would he have documents?
He was the one that.
I know, but he.
He might know where they're at, or how they got the figures is what I'm thinking. How'd you come up with the numbers?
What's also.
Because see, that was the Prilashak.
The attorney.
That attorney Prilashak started on it. And I can ask Matt Schooli, they're the ones that figured out the.
But at the end of the day, it's, it's still on our back.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But then, and, you know, maybe we ask, we can ask A O T if that's something that. Once you formed into the district. It's. Maybe it shouldn't have been done as a separate district, maybe it should have been done as. Part of the highway fund. You know, the same as if you put it in culverts or the bridge, you know what I mean? If it's.
Yeah, they, they only.
If it's to maintain the road instead of providing a service to the, it's not like you're putting water, you're providing a service. To residents.
I haven't put a lot of thought into this, but, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of pipe there. I mean, there's miles of it. I didn't realize how much there is over there, but there's a lot. You know, so, you know, the other part of it is the D P W. Question. You know, so.
There we go.
No, I know, I, I.
I know.
I, I, I know, if we don't have a D P W, but. That would be the logical.
To happen.
Or. Right.
How do you do it?
So we're gonna do that with the county.
What?
The. Why, I'm sure. This is a storm. I thought that was part of the county as well.
We could ask them.
He's in front of the conversation, I had a. People would do it. I mean, right now, we're, you know, we, we inspect the catch business, we're looking to put in our own things.
I think it's need to find out as to where you get billin' out of. D B.
Well, right now, if something happens, that's where it's going, right, or?
That'd be D B or D A?
That would be, uh.
The D B summer.
Well. Well, there's another part of this, is that part of that's in the village. So, there's, there's that part.
That's where we lost, see, this is here again where. When they started this, we had. Sixty E D Us. And then people looked at it and they're like, well, I'm in the village and I'm in the town. You're billing me twice.
They did for ten properties.
So ten properties.
Not all the properties that are split like that, just a handful.
Yep. So we dropped ten there.
And then.
So that's fifty-five, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Right, and then Dow had, has three properties, and one is about the size of this piece of paper. And he was being charged a full E D U when. I mean, it's just a little dinky piece of property.
The point is, is that, you know, there's. The point is, is that, you know, there's, there's joint responsibility over there. If, you know, from the, I mean, we're, we're looking at everything, but the point I'm trying to make is that there is a piece.
What part of the goals towards on the village road?
It's on the end of West Bay. It's the village section of West Bay.
Down past Collins.
Yes, you go over the hill.
Have to go past Collins.
Yeah, up there by.
Where it flows out.
It's before Tavers.
Yeah.
You'll see the village sign right there. So right now, we're, we're monitoring it, you know, we just actually went and looked at all the catch basins. Make sure that, uh, they're not filling up with too much gravel. They're all in good shape.
Leaves are gonna be a big thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the next thing.
Do you do that in the fall or in the spring after?
No, I mean, we'll keep an eye on it, I mean, I'm over there every day.
What, just ballpark guess?
What's that, Scott?
If we had to have. Um, Ginsky come over.
Ginsky.
And back and come out. Ballpark. I mean, we talking hundreds, or we talking thousands of.
Thousands. Right.
If you did all of them.
So we had them vacuum, or actually water jet. Uh, a section of Finch's Corners, you know, yeah, right, that was. That was hundreds of dollars to do that, I mean, it was, it was like six hundred dollars, so, you know.
So if he had to come out and suck out one basin, which you're probably not gonna have coming one.
No.
You're talking probably.
I mean.
Cause I'm thinking five hundred dollars to come in one.
Yeah, he's not gonna, yeah, it, so right now.
He's not gonna come to it.
He'll come out and vacuum a septic tank now for what, three, thirty, three, three hundred and fifty bucks? So, that kind of gives you an idea.
Let's see where we're at.
I'd have to actually physically come out, man, for the catch bases, I haven't done that.
You've got the plans.
Oh, you can go, just go over there and count them all.
I mean, you have to look at the paper, do it, unless there's a, there's probably a schedule on there that tells something.
There is, I mean, you have to flip through each sheet.
Right. You wouldn't do all of them, would you? Those are the ones that you needed.
You'd only do the ones you need, right, so.
Like three, like ten.
Right.
Ten, three, what do we, I mean.
I mean, I'm just hypothetically thinking a lot here that. Areas that I see where the, the potential is the greatest is. The end section of West Bay, where you have gravel driveways, that are carrying, carrying gravel into the road, and then into the.
Everything that's coming off a Cypress mountain there.
You, you got it, and a few other places up through there, so, there's probably.
He can fact that, right?
I haven't asked him to look at it, but say four or five catch basins in that area. And then the only other main areas that you have potential is, is where you have the, uh. The, uh, the locations where they're the final exit catch basins, so they're collecting it from everywhere.
Right.
And that's where it's congregating, so.
So it doesn't get caught, another one ends up there.
Like down there at Colocas, Casco, right during that belly. There's two right near that, I keep a close eye on.
Especially with those top floors, they'll just start now.
Right, and that's where you're, like, leaves and things of that nature, because you have everything coming down that road. So there's what, five, six, seven, eight? So your idea of ten is probably not too far off.
Three, four thousand hours.
Do you think that would be a guess, um, yearly estimate?
Once they reach a point where, um, they're, they're topped off. I mean, i- it really goes, how far do you want it?
The first. The first time we do it, there's gonna be a lot more stuff, I mean, cause you deal with a lot more loose gravel before the site gets back, and everybody's tryways, everything's settled into it.
Right.
Then after that, if you got a longer span in between it.
Right, up until when someone starts building again.
Right. That depends, you know, if you get a gully washer where you're washing, try to just through people's yards, you're gonna get a lot of stuff too.
Right.
So that should probably be budgeted then, I mean, here.
That's what we're up against immediately. Let me.
I can have Keith take a look at it, but, um, I think, you know, if you put in four. You, you're going to need to put in something.
Did you ever get a thing from USIC? A contract?
I got it, but they can't do it because it's not GPS.
Yeah, but you looked into that, didn't you?
The village is gonna do it. They said the village was getting the.
Yeah.
Call it, machine to market.
When are they gonna do that?
He talked like they were getting it. End of the summer, maybe, you heard him warn us of it.
I thought he had it, I thought he had it.
I'll get with Jay.
No, my impression was they have it.
Once we get that, then we can sign a contract. That was what, twenty-five hundred dollars? Initial thing, and then. Seven dollars, eight dollars, and ten, some dollars, something like that. And so there's six grand right there, we haven't even touched the debt service. What is that for? I don't know.
What debt service?
Hmm.
Well, the payback, not that service, payback. No, no, like, to pay back. To pay back what we borrowed from those guys.
From the A fund?
From the A fund. But we can't take fifty years to do that.
No, but I did suggest, I don't know.
We can, there's.
The infrastructure.
We can use our money for it. We can try doing that. Payback A fund.
And you're not trying to use our, but you're still dealing with the SW two, like years of the A fund money.
If we use that, then we're shorting ourselves of getting it for SW two. Yeah, does it sound reasonable that we ask if we can use, that can be DB fund not?
To do what?
Or you can ask.
For the, for the stormwater, whether towns have stormwater districts. It's just part of the higher, just sewer. So maybe it doesn't need to be a district, if that's the case, we can just do it under. DV.
Are you talking about ma- maintenance then, maintaining them?
Maintaining them.
But it is a district.
It is a district, I'm reading.
Did we form a district?
Right, I, oh, yeah, it's a special district, that's why I thought we already did, the benefit from it, should be getting charged. I think that's what I found that resolution was, from June, and like that, if I was saying, and DV could take this. Yeah, I think that would be a huge stretch.
Yeah, uh, town board has directed that Barton and Judas consulting engineers to prepare a map plan report to consider all aspects of the proposed storm sewer district.
Then we have a form of district.
Yes.
I think I might have been a part of that.
This is twenty twenty, number one oh six, establishing West Bay Road Storm Sewer District.
Right.
So that's how it's worded, it's not.
That's how it's worded.
So it's one of the special districts.
This is one of the resolutions that Rebecca did, that, that the written amount and dollar amount are totally different.
I know.
And we're in Oswego County.
Right, I know, we were.
Yeah, she will like, say eighty-five thousand, and then when she wrote it out, it would be like eight thousand five hundred, you know, just.
And the estimated cost to the typical property, typical home or.
Fifty-five dollars.
Unit EDU would be fifty-five dollars.
But it doesn't say anywhere's in there how they came to that number.
No, because everything is done here, yes.
Then group of cost of two million seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay, so.
Know what we can do for part of it? Sell it property.
Person who survived it.
Yeah.
So glad. Do we have property over there?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Yeah, Colin property, remember?
Yeah. He wants to buy it back from us?
No. Uh, Elmer does.
Oh, I didn't know.
There's forty thousand dollars if you get that, probably give us a little bit for us, but. Sell that, and that place gotta go to the special district. Special district basically, once the town buys it, the town bought. They're gonna come, but it's getting paid for through the grant.
Right.
So who owns that, A or SD?
SD. Guess where it came out from?
So what do we?
Are we gonna have another meeting?
We can have the next meeting if you want, just.
I think.
Just some answers on this one.
I think Pat needs to run the numbers, right, to see where they are.
See where we're at.
Yeah.
Um. Can we, can we? All income revenue for that district would be what? The EDUs are.
Twenty-four hundred dollars, right?
Let me get, let me go get that sec.
Yeah, I have a question about the end.
Yeah, I didn't, did we ever decide, I don't have anything for this, I saw that, but I didn't know what that was telling me.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, um.
So, I, we just don't know. Charlie said a thirty-four percent increase, so we kind of went, but I think that we needed, that needed to be researched more.
Yeah, some of it wasn't adding up to me either, I'm not sure. These are right, just make your contact and get information. If we that. He does all, he does, and this budget too, so we can do someone else.
It's fifty-eight, not forty-eight. It should be thirty-one hundred and ninety.
Okay.
So they didn't give you any information? Well.
Yeah, it did, like, how would, this thing would probably, while we're all here together, we haven't. Heard a lot of some, some hard numbers. So, I mean, the thirty-four percent was. Was legit of what he said, but I'm not sure what that equates to dollar. Dollar wise for the town to start.
What, what, what are your?
Ambulance.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, or.
Well, we gotta have a contract, and that's not.
Right, well, let's hear the budget, and then, sure, if he does contracts, and I'll find out.
I got contracts.
You have contracts.
All I need is dollar amounts, but. How did they come up with thirty-four percent?
Because of the big raise in the, uh, hiring drivers, they had to pay them. That's what, some of them are breathing palm.
But is the village for he to pay more?
No.
Yeah.
They don't believe they're paying a higher percentage. From what the mayor told me, they did their budget before they decided on hiring drivers. And I don't think they budgeted.
So we're paying for.
That's kind of the impression I got, and then when I asked that question, I kind of got the dance round.
Yeah.
But we already did our budget.
The same, the same.
But the town of Wilkens paying more too.
Yeah, I think everybody is.
Cause my question is. Now, since I listen to the scanner a lot, but I'll listen to it, and nine times out of ten, when a call goes out, and I turn the scanner on, they're going to Wilkens. They're going to K O, they're going to Victory.
They go.
So it's mutual aid.
Yeah, they go all over.
And that's what I told him, I says, if you're running a paid ambulance service, and that's what we're hiring. Maybe us as a town ought to look at men, or, you know, men are does Hannibal. All these. Volunteer fire departments, volunteer ambulance workers are going out. They can't get volunteers.
They also bill people.
They bill them, but.
And that should cover their costs, I don't understand how they come up with thirty-four percent.
Cause they're paying two people to be in that firehouse twenty-four seven.
But shouldn't that go to the people that use the service?
I would think so.
But that's what I said, Stan just gave him a budget, the budget from the village of Far East, and it didn't say.
What, what, how much money they bring in from.
Yeah, it's just expenditures.
But on the other hand, we were at the meeting the other day, there were a couple towns that pay to Southern Cuban ambulance corps. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year contract, so. I mean, I.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Call them through right to town for that kind of money. Now, they do get all of them, they do, uh, for other services, and I think.
But what happens is now that they're manned twenty-four seven, the village loses it all, so that's why they get.
Right.
And how many times do they go to the rent sensor? In the state park. Okay.
I think you should know everybody's insurance companies when they do go.
So Pat's gonna run the numbers again, right?
Yep.
For what we have.
Right, from these re-.
And I think. So, so for SD.
I'll get this to you.
For SD, we.
Still tentative.
That's, okay, that's what we do at other towns, I just, you can't mention it, pretty much, but.
Well, we don't need a preliminary until.
Well, that's what.
The next.
October.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah. But I don't wanna, I don't want another one of these until we get to the preliminary.
And I'm gonna run the numbers for you guys, if you don't want me to print mine out. I mean, that's what I do at other towns.
Change everything and then print another one of these out without all that chicken scratch.
I thought the tentative was one.
Well, normally, we do have a tentative, I'm just saying that we follow that, the instructions of what, OSC or whoever, but. How am I gonna run the numbers, just tell you what they are, if I can't print it out?
It's up there.
I don't know, I'm just asking what you want me to do.
I'm gonna keep this one, this is the tentative budget, this is the one that I.
That's why I was asking, do you want me to call up prelim, and you said you don't want that until, but yet you want me to.
Right, she can't do like an adjusted tentative, or? I've never done one, so.
I think you're going to want to know where you're going.
Oh, absolutely, but.
See one with the bottom lines, I mean, we, we've changed quite a few figures, so I wanna see.
Right.
If somebody asked me, this is the tentative budget.
I understand.
So this can still be the tentative budget.
This is still the tentative.
She can turn us off.
She can do whatever she wants.
Yeah, if you want to turn, I'd like one anyways with the, with all the numbers changed in it, and I'll still call this by tentative. But that'll just be one I can look at.
It won't have a cover page that looks like this.
It's not gonna have all this for you. And we're all the bottom lines of you.
You just want me to take the markups and just enter all the information in. And just print out another one, and call it.
Nothing, don't call it anything.
Well, I have to put a heading on it, or I won't print it out.
You call it a tentative number two.
Tensive number.
Tensive number two.
Tensive, but spelled tentative wrong.
There you go, just like the count.
Just T O N, town.
Yeah, call it potential revisions.
Yeah. Okay, so, we're gonna do a resolution because it's getting like.
Yeah.
Made that motion, okay, Karen. And Charlie. A sixteen twenty point four one museum contractual twenty-five hundred, a thirty-three ten.
A sixteen twenty point four one museum contractual twenty-five hundred, a thirty-three ten point four traffic control thirty-five hundred. A fifty ten point one highway superintendent personal services fifty-five thousand three hundred and seventeen. A fifty ten point one one deputy highway superintendent twenty-two sixty. A fifty-one thirty-two point one highway garage personal services is four thousand one hundred and twenty. Uh, a fifty ten point two highways, equipment. Heavy superintendent equipment is sixty thousand, eight, 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 ten point four four. Cemetery is town managed two thousand. D A fifty-one, may put the wrong number, whatever the bridge reserve is, I missed a number. D A fifty-one. Twenty point.
Two R.
Two R, fifty thousand, right, bridges, bridges are, I forgot the zero. D A fifty-one thirty point two machinery equipment ten thousand, D A fifty-one forty point one. Free Bush and weed personal services is thirty-two hundred, D A fifty-one forty point four brush and weed. Contractuals forty-seven hundred, D A fifty-one forty-two point one snow removal personal services eighty-seven. Thousand two hundred and sixty-eight, D A fifty-one forty eight point one, other governor, other government. Personal services is sixty-eight thousand thirteen, D A twenty-two. D A two six three zero zero services for other governments one hundred thousand. D B five one one zero point one general affairs personal services is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine. D B fifty-one thirty point four two machinery contractual zero. D B fifty-one forty point one brush and weed personal services twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty. And D B fifty-one forty point four brush and weed contractual nine thousand five hundred. We made that motion, Charlie seconded it, great. Karen.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Charlie, Joan.
Yeah.
Yes. We've been increasing the ambulance by thirty-four percent.
It's fine, we're not talking about that till the next meeting, so I'm leaving along, okay. I guess at Monday's meeting, we'll figure out when another meeting is.
I'll put that on the table, so I don't have to S D, because you're figuring that one out too, special just surgery, that's him.